All right.
All right, here you did this.
Good.
Ten points.
All right, I'd like to call to order this meeting at the Evansville Vanderbilt Public Library Board of Trustees today, October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. We do not have any visitors who wish to speak nor any correspondence, so we'll move ahead to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to consider the items on consent agenda? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion of any of the items covered under consent?
I do have a question on the director's report and the personnel report. I noticed that Scott said you participated in preliminary interviews for the facility manager's position. But I didn't see the position listed on the, maybe I missed it on the personnel, the PR or not PR, personnel report. Yeah, as a currently open.
Probably because we're interviewing for it.
Yes.
And it was probably on last month when it was open and now and we, we don't keep having applications come in while we're interviewing. We, we closed it publicly for accepting applications.
So that's.
Yeah, so we're at the point where we have final interviews, we've done our screen interviews to date and we'll be bringing in three finals for that position.
Could you?
Any further discussion regarding consent items? Hearing none, all those in favor of accepting the consent agenda items, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay, motion carries. Moving on to governance, and this is a technicality, however, we have two items to consider under governance. The library operating, the library budget, as you will, and benefit renewal and wages. The budget actually entails that recommendation for benefit renewal and wages. So I wonder if it might be more prudent to just switch those two items and amend the agenda just by considering the, the item marked by point B, considering that first, moving it to five A and moving the actual budget to five B. If that is the pleasure of the board, we would need, and we would need a motion, a second and a vote on amending the agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second? And a second. Any discussion regarding that? Hearing that, all those in favor of adopting the agenda as amended, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed nay. Motion accepted. And so we will consider the two thousand and twenty-three benefit renewal and wages, Lisa.
Hello.
Hello.
So in your package, there was the big memorandum. I'm just going to kind of go through just highlights, your benefits, you'll notice there are no changes in our benefit providers. I'm very happy that we received a six percent reduction in our dental insurance, which also carry over for a two-year, two-year walk within that as well. So that was very exciting. Then as far as you'll see, the next few pages shows the rates, the insurance, no changes except for the third page, no dental, did reduce. I do want to, let's, I do want to say again, with rate of captive, we've been very, very fortunate with the captive. So strong, we have no payment going in there for the seventh, the second year, which means what the may have been putting into the captive. Premiums have gone well. We did hear that some insurance increases were coming back, it's fully insured at thirty, thirty-five percent. They had one that was forty-three percent, so we were very fortunate, we were able to keep our rates where they were at. On the third page. And so EDPL has this step compensation plan mainly for the newer board foremembers, where all employees are in good standing automatically move to the next higher step effective the first payroll period of the year. The step increase is a two point one six percent for all labor grade with the exception of grade one, which is a two point oh seven. The annual step increase and the recommended across the board.
Is grade one for lowest for the highest?
I'm sorry.
Is grade one the lower?
The lowest. The annual step increase and the recommended across the board, two and a half percent increase to off this, which we, we three will result in a base wage increase for all employees in good standing. Four point six six, four point five seven for the grade one. And then the next page shows how that chart reflects the two and a half percent increase you'll see in the low is, we owe the eight dollars and seventeen cents. Um, those are our book shelters, we have very few of those positions, most of our start out at the ten seventy-two or higher. So EDPL has taken the library board's approval to renew the lease, the same career contracts were applicable. And with the one premium reduction and all of the rate codes on the benefits, you know, for twenty twenty-three. EDPL has also taken board's approval to increase each step in the scale by two and a half percent effective with the first payroll in two thousand and twenty-three.
Do we have that in the form of a motion?
So move, second.
We have a motion and a second to consider these two items regarding benefits and wages, any discussion or questions?
We have a couple of questions, Lisa. One, on the, I guess we're technically self-insured on health insurance up to the seventy-five thousand, the forados probably for what there is about for any larger fund. How do we arrive then with that budget for your full health insurance?
So the premiums are based on, there are several different steps, so there's so much that goes into pay TPA. There's so much that goes into pay forado, so much goes into the stock loss, so much goes into, you know, we have different little things that we have to have that are regulatory based on. We had new healthcare movement this year based on the new, you know, transparency, et cetera. So all those is what makes up the rate, and then what's left is what goes into our fund, which then is what in turn what funds the first seventy-five thousand dollars for each person on our insurance.
And that's the budget fund, not the forado fund?
Correct, so we, we anything over seventy-five thousand, so if I was to go in seventy-five thousand comes out of our fund that we hope that will.
But we don't budget seventy-five thousand per, for arriving in a.
So right now our fund is a little over five hundred thousand, that has built over the years, last year we got down pretty low, a little over a hundred thousand. But depends on how the year goes, then that makes the difference. So with us having the five hundred thousand, that's where we're able to come in, we have a little bit of an increase to the TPA, but then we just reduce the amount that we put into the fund, so that was, you know, we got that helping fund to be able to do that.
Okay.
Yep.
And then the second question was how we arrived at two point five percent as far as keeping competitive with wages and.
So we kind of looked, first we looked and see what inflation was within Vanderbilt, at the point in time that we did, we were at eight point six percent inflation. Every year we bring, except for one over the last, since two thousand and sixteen, we've increased the scale percentage-wise to keep up with inflation. We increased it by a percent a couple of years and then a couple of years was two percent, two percent. Then there was a two percent in two thousand and twenty-one and we did a one and a half this past year to try to keep the market, stay with the market. So this year in discussion with everybody, we just kind of came to the budget can handle two and a half percent, looking at inflation, looking at just what's coming down the pipe. We are doing the salary study, so if it comes back and that salary study is kind of high, then we're not going to have to worry about bumping it as much, finding a little bit at a time.
Okay, so that, that study was geared toward next year.
Correct, correct. So there, we're.
Providing fun.
Yes, so we're hoping to have it done in January, February-ish, something like that, but then of course we'll look at that for the budget for two thousand and twenty-four.
Thanks.
Any further discussion or question?
I'll just come to that, when we got our stuff, which is national based, they said one and a half percent was necessary for the second quarter, our fiscal year. So two and a half percent, we're thinking about getting a higher rate for, for something. Speaking of which, the second question, how many do we have full-time at grade one?
Full-time at grade one, those are our circulation clerks. So I'm going to say a lot of those are, are part-timer. To throw a number out, we have a couple of part-timers at each location that are clerks, no, no, they're all, they're all navigators, aren't they?
No, 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 no.
Grade one is the shelter. I thought she, I thought it's a two, I'm sorry. Showers.
One or two.
One, one.
One is a shelter, we have four and it's not, they're not, they're not.
I, I think it would be an interesting exercise just to have a number in each of these blocks of how many FTE we have in each one of these grades and categories.
We are working on that, yes.
Just so that way you could look time, you can see what your trend looks like for longevity and.
Yeah.
In our HRA system, to start pointing to those reports, we've only added a year, so we don't have to.
And just to clarify, can Lisa tell me if I missed Bob's point about four and a half percent with the step increase? And the two, it ends up being about four and a half, four point twelve percent, yeah, yes.
So two and a half percent was. The band check.
Yes, yes, and then the stat is two point one six, yes. So that does.
That's like.
Come to what it's.
So in January, I've got a raise coming already with the current. And then since you raised and where I'm going to, then it equates to four point six.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of accepting the recommendation to accept the benefit renewal and wage changes, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed nay. And that passes. Now we'll, thank you Lisa, now we'll move to the adoption of the operating fund, improvement of reserve fund, fine interest redemption fund, rainy day fund, and special library will.
So we have submitted and published notice to taxpayers on the Indiana Beatway site as well as here locally within this central building for this particular meeting, which is our adoption meeting, that's the final step of our two thousand and twenty-three budgeting process. The board will complete an ordinance upon approval of the budgets for two thousand and twenty-three. And that resolution states that for the expenses of the Evansville Vanderbilt County Public Library for the year ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, the sums here and specified are hereby appropriated and ordered set apart out of the several funds here and named and for the purposes here and specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Such sums here and appropriated shall be held to include all expenditures authorized to be made during the year unless otherwise expressly stipulated and provided for by law. In addition, for the purposes of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of Evansville Vanderbilt County Public Library, the property tax levies and property tax rates as here and specified are included here in budget form four B for all funds must be completed, submitted, and prescribed, and those were included in your packet. And so the adopted budget amounts would be listed there under rainy day, general operating fund, debt service fund, special fund, Willard and our library improvement reserve fund, and then the three funds that have tax levies associated with them. And again, I'll mention that the levy amounts and the levies are more so the levy rates are based on our concern of eighty-five percent of the current net assessed value, not the full one hundred percent net assessed value. So those numbers will change once the, the OGF calculates and certifies our budget and provides our seventeen eighty-two notice.
Move to approve.
We have a.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion or questions regarding adoption of the budget? Hearing none, all those in favors, signify by saying aye. Those opposed nay, and I believe we all need to sign something.
Yes, if you went on the corresponding line with your name, check the box, aye, if you voted aye, and then sign on the left side. Right side of the page, I have it backwards, and I lose secretary's signature twice.
Sorry. Oh, she's.
She's got it.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, Lori. Now that that's over, finance report.
Do that real quickly? I'm just going to touch base very quickly on the monthly September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two appropriation. Report is all, it spends a little bit more in detail, the per line item of our budget under the third quarter update. For the month end, September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, we have appropriation balance of five million, six hundred and ninety-two thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars and forty-four cents, which equates to thirty-eight percent of our budget remaining at the end of September, does not include October invoices.
Thank you, any questions on that? I can report investments.
Investments, balances in our state investment pool of trust Indiana for the four operating funds. Equate to thirteen million, nine hundred and fifty-four thousand, eight hundred dollars. The average daily yield for September was two point oh nine to eight percent, and the average daily yield year to date was point oh, I'm sorry, point seven one three nine, and I printed off the wrong form, so I don't have the actual increases, but you should have it on your packet. And the interest rates continue to back, so we're doing much better interest rate.
Unless you're trying to buy a house.
Yes.
Or retire.
Thank you, Lori. For that, approval of bill.
Yes, yes, okay, so I move for approval for invoices totaling five hundred and eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and seven dollars and seventy-four cents from September the seventh of two thousand and twenty-two through October thirteenth of two thousand and twenty-two and for payroll, September the ninth of two thousand and twenty-two for two hundred and forty-seven thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars and seventy-seven cents, and September twenty-third for three hundred and eighty-two thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty-six cents.
We have a need to, do we have a second?
What?
We have a motion and a second, any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favors, signify, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay, motion passes. Other business, sorry. Too many favors to consideration.
Can I do my third quarter?
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped to the third quarter and you were just silent now.
Someone want to hear more about the budget.
So in your package, you'll see the third quarter update for our operating budget, which includes our revenue as well as our line-by-line expenditures. And I just point out those that are kind of in the turquoisey blue color are just items that we're looking at and keeping an eye on as far as the balances and what we've expended out of them so far. Of course, the ones that are in red, we, those particular line items, we've already over expended, but we have identified other areas where we will be moving money, so funds to cover those. For instance, you'll notice one of our large ones is the other e-audio books and, which is over spent by forty-four thousand dollars to date, and that doesn't include what you just approved and another twenty-seven thousand, six hundred dollars. Uh, so what we're looking at in our talk to technical services department about doing is moving our print book money and our non-print materials out of the capital category to cover any expenditures for the audio and the regular ebooks. We've seen a significant price hike in those particular materials that we're purchasing. We've also seen or had some concerns, not necessarily concerns, but some challenges with Baker Taylor, who is our major book publishing supplier. They had a ransomware attack, and so they're a little bit behind in getting orders placed. And so those orders may not come in for us by the end of the year, and we won't spend the prep material fund as much as we had anticipated or planned. So we're just reallocating funds within departments and cover, cover those types of expenses that are over. And that's mainly the big one. I would note that our attorney fees that is over budget is due in large part because of the bonding issuance this year. And as of the end of September, it was over eighty-two hundred dollars, but we'll recoup eleven thousand dollars.
Bond.
And fees, yeah, from the bond when it's issued. Any questions about any of the categories themselves?
Yeah, a quick question, vehicles machinery. Were we looking, I thought last meeting, we were trying to get a proposal on the van or the minivan, where are we with that?
So I was going to mention it under announcements, but I can let you know that we did send out the addendum to the RFQ, and we got two proposals back, one from Kenny Kent Toyota and one from Deepak and Honda. The one from Toyota was for a minivan on, on location and was actually six thousand dollars cheaper than the one from Deepak, which was just beginning production, and we weren't receiving until six to eight months from now. So we did go ahead and pull the trigger on the minivan at Toyota and just picked it up last week, actually. It was in total for all fees. I wrote it down somewhere on here.
What is that, is that what that's coming out of, vehicles machinery or?
Yes.
Fifty thousand.
It was like forty-two thousand dollars, some change, I thought I wrote it on your bike. It's also a hybrid, which we didn't request, but it, it did come in as a hybrid, they said most of their minivans and a lot of their vehicles are making higher-end and hybrid. Kind of looks like a spaceship, but it's really nice, pretty slick.
Yeah.
I got to be the first one to drive it, so. It's, it's very nice, though, and it has a third row seating capacity in it, so you can put additional people in it and or fold it down and fit plenty of work into the back. So as we travel to conferences that are within drivable range, we'll be able to utilize that.
So with a hybrid, I guess our travel expense are just going to fall to the floor, right?
Not just the gas.
Always.
The gas supply, which is actually over right now.
Very good. Thank you, sorry for jumping again.
No.
Well, you're fine.
Any other questions? Thank you, Lori. All right, we'll move on to other business, seven A consideration architect for the McCullough renovation project. So we have a recommendation from the building and ground committee who have reviewed the, the recommended for the consideration from the RFP for the master plan from MKM. So I know that's in the packet. And we would be looking for a motion and a second on that, so that we can have discussion.
So move.
Have a motion, have a second on that one?
Second.
We've got a motion as second, any discussion regarding the consideration of accepting MKM as the architect for the stage one and consideration of moving forward with stage two.
Just for phase one, or stage one. Programming and essentials.
You have any questions, discussion?
I guess that's why I'm just asking for the committee's.
Yeah.
Kind of perspective, I know this is coming as a recommendation, but you know, not sitting on the committee, just.
Just to give you a quick snapshot, we had two meetings regarding this, or two discussions, one formal meeting where we had Zach available for us to kind of beat it down on what it is that he presented to us and really understand what, what they were proposing, because I can tell you, we were initially as the, as the committee, a little bit disappointed what was presented at first, because it felt like it was a little vague. We had, we had quite a bit of discussion and the fact that, and anybody in the room, just had a, a strong feeling that MKM from at least the conceptual master planning will be the group that we want to at least start with. We don't have to be married to them for a long time, but we think this would be a good, take what you've done in the master planning, we're going to McCullough, let's see what you can do. They will be involved, there will be local architecture firms involved as well and engineering, because MKM does not have engineering services, so. And again, it, we, we really kind of torn apart in the, in the discussion, just to make sure we understood what was there. And again, you know, it, one of the things that I can tell you, I was concerned about is it felt like we had this engineering study, why are we doing more spending on engineering? And it was, it was basically, well, that was a, a flat line of where are we in terms of potential capex that we need to invest over the next couple of years from an engineering standpoint? This case, it's, hey, we're going to have to design this, that master plan was just blue sky, you know, here's what we want to do. Now we've got to put true designing and understand what's going to happen in terms of moving walls, HVAC changes. I think there's some structural issues as well related to that building that will have to be addressed as well.
So is that based on what you can do?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Yeah, we're not, we're not busting any walls out or anything like that.
So within the parameters that are already set.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
One of the, one of the things we questioned was the digital three-dimensional scan that they mentioned, thinking maybe that was something that might be an unnecessary expense. They explained actually that will end up saving money rather than sending individuals down to actually do that, that work on site, that that actually gives them the information that they need and is actually cost-saving mechanism rather than more of an exorbitant expenditure.
That's what they were saying as well, but it's to go from, I don't know that we have really good as-bills from the last redesign, and this would be a lot easier to get the as-bill. But I was also kind of, I knew that that's a good way to fix some extra bills.
Yeah. And as a matter of fact, this was slated, uh, to me for the board at the last meeting. And, you know, the committee had some questions and just decided that it would be better that we get those questions answered, that we meet again prior to actually bringing this performance.
Thank you.
Three months to get it done.
We just.
Great, thanks, yes.
And then from, yeah, and that will, that will be the initial information that will allow them to go out for pretty long construction.
And we are in our bond, we have to give estimates, exactly, the estimate of bidding, bidding would start in March or April, and then the entire from bid to the end would be an estimated, and that was a pretty good estimate just to cover us, but we had to give those estimates for the final one information.
As well as a architect to record.
Yes.
Any other questions? We have a motion and a second to accept the consideration of the architect MKM for the McCullough renovation project, all those in favors, signify by saying aye. That's opposed nay. Motion passes. I thought, in seven B, Willard Library Board appointment, we we have not appointed a board member to the Willard Library Board, which as part of their bylaws, is part of our responsibility. It's to appoint one board member to that board, it's been a vacant position for a while, we've considered a few candidates that had not, now the candidate with the. Now the candidate with the um qualifications that were uh necessary. Um so I believe we have a candidate who is willing to assume that responsibility um. Sent an email out regarding that to board members. We would need that in the form of a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so that would be a motion to appoint Marcia Marcia Al as a Willard. Library Board Member representing um or not really representing, appointed by. So we have a motion and a second. Any just further discussion regarding that?
When will she start?
She passed to do decimal quizzes.
So I do have a question. Uh as I understand it, there are no term limits on that. I think it might be in Marcy's best interest and the best interest of this board to consider that motion. With like a four-year limit, four-year term, so to appoint Marcy for a four-year term. Then we come back for whoever is here at that point. Uh some of us are trying to retire. And revisit it.
So so let me ask a question.
Already a three-year term.
Okay, I. Okay, I'm sorry.
And let's run to limit the number of terms that she's.
Uh I just wanted to make it so we weren't appointing her for life and she didn't have to serve for a while.
No, when I made the contact to Marcy, it was the um. The Lord Chair. I told her, you know, right now this is what it is, but obviously if life happens, you let us know if you have to be quicker and reappoint somebody else. So, yeah.
So we're, since we're discussing terms and I think statute is fine. Are we putting her in a, I made the motion, I should have known this. Are we appointing her to a yet to be completed term or a full three-year term?
So the term, the last person actually turned off in twenty and in twenty nineteen. So and we haven't had anyone since then, so. Uh if she takes office on January first, she will start the beginning of the term.
So can we, when will Willard, can we appoint her for finish out that term and then a complete term just to get her on the board and be done with it?
I think.
So, so I will amend my motion. To appoint Marcia Al to the Willard Board from the E V P L to complete the yet to expire term and then for a full term thereafter.
But now, if I remember correctly, we need to accept the amended. So we need a second for the amended.
Second, do a second.
We have a second to the. Right, all those in favor. Amended motion, please signify by saying aye. The announcements.
No, the ban is very, very nice. Um the other big thing that happened um in the, since the last time that we had, we had our annual staff development. Not good, but our annual at this time staff development uh. Um day this past Monday and was very well received by the staff. Um there are some great sessions. Um I walked around and stepped into. All the sessions ever go on, everything from um training for story time to um genealogy training. To trending on reference databases.
Charlie's heart cooking.
Charlie's heart cooking. Um so it was, it was really informative for the staff. Um. And um I think everyone had a very good learning experience and a good time getting to Joe with their um. Fellow staff members from across the system that they may not get to see all the time for one day. Um that we had mixed rooms and everything coming in. Had a great tour of the facility that um Lamont provided um and showed all the back of house things that they may have never seen. All the mechanical rooms um and let a couple of people poke their head up and look at the roof. And because you don't normally get to see the library roof in your normal duties, it's like Lamont tonight. We're just up there yesterday, we need that stuff. So, but it was a great day. I think the staff enjoyed it a lot and learned a lot and it's a great benefit that then the board allows us to do this. And it's a great cost effective way to do training um for the staff.
Other announcements, I will remind you, we have piñata awards. That's why we're up here, they're setting up. Uh it doesn't officially start until six, but if you have a little time and you want to go down. That was so well received. Erica, how many? Over twenty-four hundred, twenty-four hundred votes on twenty-five piñatas. There were some phenomenal ones, even if you don't save for the awards, if you walk through the first floor of Central, they're on display everywhere. Uh first time we collaborated, it was a very, very well received collaboration. I look forward to continuing to collaborate with them in the future. And on Saturday, we have our speak author here at two P M, Carol Lindstrom, the children's book author, We Are Water Protectors. And she is a Call the Cut winning author, so she will be here on Saturday at two P M.
She's from, is she from Indiana?
No, no.
Lindstrom's not a common name, there's Professor and uh Nobel Prize winner.
So she will be here on Saturday, so just two, two programming announcements there. I just wanted to uh let the board know that even though you received the email from the State Board of Accounts, I have uploaded. Under the documents section of Board Book, the last audit for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. And we did receive a clean audit, uh no recommendations um for part of the audit process itself, so. Went very smoothly and very quickly.
And thank you for all your work on that end of the budget.
Yeah, her and the staff did a great job. Everything that the auditors request.
Anything else to come before this?